Well, welcome everybody. It's March 4th, 2021. We're here for regularly scheduled New Market School Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. We'll start with a public comment. I didn't get any comments, Susan, in the email. Did you get any?
None electronically, but we do have one live here tonight. So Lieutenant, if you'd like to make a comment.
Is that right to take this off? I am here from the town. My name is Lieutenant Greg Jordan. I'm reading a letter prepared by the town manager in reference to the agenda item involving the local use of the parking lot. Honorable members of the school board, on behalf of the police chief and director of public works, I write today to ask that you grant Loco Sports requests to use the New Market Junior/Senior High School parking lot. We reviewed Loco Sports to hold the annual Great Bay Half Marathon and 5K Road Race, and we wholeheartedly approved it. They are following all safety protocols outlined by the state to hold a race. The race has become a longstanding tradition in the community, drawing people from all over the country to New Market. With the pandemic still going on, it will be scaled back in a different race, but still one that will greatly benefit the business of the town. In addition, they donate annual to several charities in the area, including Project Graduation. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Stephen Fornia, Town Manager.
Thank you, Lieutenant Jordan. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go on to our.
Well, I was supposed to be able to make a comment as well.
I'm sorry. I didn't see you on there. Go right ahead.
Okay, certainly. Yeah, this is Arlen Chaffey with Gravel Cycling, and I've got an event coming up, hopefully on June 6th, that would need the use of the parking lots at both the junior/senior high school and possibly the elementary school. It's June 6th, so it's toward the tail end of the school year, and the event will be reimagined much the same way that the half we just heard about. We would adhere to any in-place state protocols for road races and cycling events. The Safer at Home initiative has developed through the governor's task force. We would adhere to that if that's still in place. Fingers crossed by June 6th, everyone will be singing a different song, or a better song anyway. But I would put in the application for facilities used should this clear the board tonight.
Thank you, Arlen. Anybody else online?
Yes, this is Michael Sayloran from Loco Sports.
Hi, Mike. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Before we start on the important matters, just sometimes the school board doesn't get a chance to hear about the successes of the school. Our daughter, Robin, graduated from New Market High, and I was a co-star. I coached her. She went on to graduate from Colby College with honors, then went on to Brown to get her PhD in neuroscience, and now is doing some very crucial studies at the Gladstone Institute in San Francisco. So thank you to the schools of New Market.
Thank you.
Today, business, I think you've already heard a little bit about it, that the company Loco Sports is going to put on a COVID-safe event on April 11th, and we're requesting the use of the parking lots, and it's exclusively for the parking lots. Nothing else will occur. The runners that will be coming will be strictly told that they must wear masks at all times. So you're going to see a lot of people around town wearing masks unless they're not running. Excuse me, when they're not running, wearing masks. When they're running, they don't have to wear a mask. Besides that, the race is completely different. I think as Greg told you, instead of a mass start, we start two runners at a time every 10 seconds. So it's a steady stream of runners as opposed to the large start that you would normally see. For your clarification, there've been about 30 live events in New Hampshire since the state of New Hampshire came up with guidelines for COVID-safe races, and to date, there hasn't been any reporting of any COVID-related illnesses caused by these events. And we do have to report back to the state and do a summary and a detailed analysis of everything that we did to disclose, you know, that we made everybody wear masks and social distance and cleaning of all surfaces and everything else. The race itself has been going on 14, 15, maybe longer than that, and every year, we've contributed generously to the Project Graduation, which we believe is a wonderful resource and a real saving grace for our young people on their night of their graduation. So I hope with your good graces that we can use the parking lots and have a fun, safe race and contribute back to the town in the terms of having people come to our event.
Thank you. So I would suggest, if it pleases the board, that we pick up this topic right now while we have these folks on, in case anybody has any questions. And first of all, I would start out from the superintendent to get your thoughts on it first.
Yeah. So all of these events will take place later on in the spring. They're all being held on the weekend. So there's three requests to use our parking lots, basically. And so I couldn't imagine myself of any kind of a conflict, but I also didn't want to not bring this to the board since we've been very clear about what our expectations are in terms of using our facilities and property this year. So again, this is not in the building. They wouldn't be using any of ours. Each has reassured us that they would be cleaning up thoroughly afterwards. My conversations with Steve and the police and fire chief, there's a long history of all of these parties using our campuses, and there's been no incidence of any kind of vandalism, or trash, or any problems whatsoever. So again, none of these ran last year. It was my first year, so I really didn't know the history and thought perhaps maybe you might have questions for them about this and felt it would be important for you to have the opportunity, in case you're then asked by constituents about it, you have the opportunity tonight to ask any questions of these folks as you can. So it's these two, so the biking, the running, and then there's also, I guess, a garden club type of that wants to do a plant sale in the parking. I guess they had historically done it in the library parking lot, but you know, that seems a little small, so they're hoping to do it in our parking lot because it's bigger.
Each one of these would be on a weekend day, right?
Each are on a weekend day, yes.
I think we've talked a lot about this being sort of the center of the community, and in this COVID time, this allows us to express that in a way that I feel is safe and that protocols will be taken. And I think it's a good use of our facilities on a weekend when they wouldn't be used outside.
I agree.
May I have a motion to approve then these three uses that are on our agenda tonight of the outside parking lots at the high school and elementary school?
So moved.
There is a second. Any further comment or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Ayes. Those are approved. Thank you very much, once again.
Thank you very much.
We got all five. Yeah, thank you. Take care. We look forward to those events. Thanks for doing that for the community. Appreciate it.
Just one clarifying question. Are you comfortable, if we have other requests on the weekend, to use our parking lots for me to go ahead and move forward with them, or is it the board's wish for me to bring it before you?
I am fine with it. You know, I know that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. All right. So then we'll move on. We have reports. Superintendent Report is first.
Okay, so just a couple of items worth noting. We've had, as you know, challenges with keeping all of our positions filled and with turnover and also our ability to hire people to reduce people leave. We've had two additional custodians resign in the last couple of weeks. So I've asked Devin, our new facilities director, to really take a hard look at what are our current needs. You know, the building project's over. We have a lot more space. And to maybe get a few people together, form a little quick committee, and you know, look at what are our options here? You know, can we have a recommendation? Because this is not sustainable. If we can't hire people, you know, part of it could be pay. I'm not sure what is all behind it. So I've asked him if he would do that. So if you're aware of anyone in the community that has expertise in this area, that, you know, maybe we could add to the committee and work with him. I certainly would appreciate you sending me a name or two of people in our community that might be interested in serving to help us out there. So that's one. Also, Lilla Bozak, who is a student of ours at the high school, is moving on to the New Hampshire State Poetry Out Loud competition. So she'll be representing New Market there, and I just wanted to give her a good shout out, you know. I had a candidate last year that made it up to the states, and it's really quite a wonderful honor. And so I thought it was worth mentioning, and I checked with Taylor to make sure it wasn't on her list of things to give shout outs to. So we're cheering her on. Also, I just, I wanted to, in case anybody, this is on your radar, of course, the governor, back just on Friday before we all left for vacation, signed an emergency order number 85. And so we were all a little surprised, as was the commissioner, when it was announced. And so I've been in contact with him to try to really understand, how does this apply to us? If it applies to us, does anything change? We're in four days a week. We've already given families the choice. So is this something different for us, or is this kind of a shout out and a nudge to communities who haven't, you know, yet returned kids after a year to nudge them towards that? And it's the latter, not the former. So it was a great conversation I had with him, and I thought, you know, it was worth noting that he was gushing with accolades at the work that we're doing here in New Market. He said, you know, that we're kind of an exemplar a bit in the state for being able to keep our kids here, even on the remote days, our high-risk kids are coming in, all of the things that we would want to do to support kids. We're working hard to do that. So I thank the board, you know, the staff, the administration, the parents in the community for all doing their part to make this possible. And it is, you know, being recognized. I mean, he was just gushing with compliments about what we're doing here. So I thought always nice to have a feel-good comment or two at the beginning of the meeting. Last, we had, last, I guess it was yesterday afternoon, we have a Democratic, I'm trying to think of the name of it, a club at the junior/senior high school, and they held a Q&amp;A session with our school board candidates yesterday, and it was recorded. And, you know, I thought maybe I would put that up on the website for folks to view, though I wasn't sure if that was appropriate to do, if there was, if the board felt that there was any prior history or something I should know about. I'm not recording anything or saying anything. It's just to give people the opportunity to listen to what the candidates have to say.
I don't recall, frankly, I don't know. What's the board's pleasure?
Does anyone have any, see any problem with? I don't think it's ever been recorded because probably these were always live, but I don't know.
I think the traditional candidate night would have been recorded and put on channel 13.
Yeah, true. That's true.
That would have happened. My only thought about doing it is, you know, one of the things that came up in that was trying to find things a variety of different ways, and just, and to my mind, gives people another opportunity. All the candidates that we have were there. I don't know. I think it might be okay.
Kim, I wonder if we can ask Tim to see.
Yeah, so I say that might be better for him. It's just for.
Send people to go that.
Put it on channel 13. I mean, I think he could probably take a copy of it.
All right. Well, I'll reach out to Tim then and see.
The candidates, that's definitely more in past on.
Yeah, they were definitely recorded. Yeah, I just, I didn't know if there was any kind of past practice or if that was alarming to anybody to do. It's just trying to communicate or provide a way for people that, you know, might want to see that because I don't think they're doing another candidate tonight. But again, I'm not involved in any of that, so I don't.
No, they're not. They're doing one tonight, Susan. They're doing one tonight. That's a town council, though.
Town council.
Oh, okay.
Not for everyone? No, it's just town council.
So I'll reach out to Tim. Thank you for the suggestion. So that, that's all I've got.
So it was hot off the presses, I think I read or heard yesterday about at least the federal government refocusing in terms of making vaccines available to teachers and staff and all that. Has the, did the commissioner weigh in on that yet? I know that's really fresh.
Well, we met, not with the commissioner, I met with the commissioner on Monday. Wednesday, I met with Dr. Chan and the epidemiologist team, and they said that they would be providing us with, you know, kind of an outline of their plan in the next few days.
I think something kept to come out this afternoon. I think they were talking about moving to 2B, which is where the teachers fall, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Like starting scheduling appointments maybe next week. So it may be, it may have come out just today, and then people 50 and older the week after, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I wonder if we could get, this might be crazy, Susan, but I know we had the flu clinic. Do we have a COVID clinic?
So there's a couple of ways that they're looking at queuing this up for us. And one of them is to do the flu clinic style, and also there's partnerships in the area, regional partnerships with health providers. And so those are the two ways that they were looking at, and they said that they would share with us in the next couple of days a plan. Nothing came into my email today. So I don't know, but it's really great news because if that happens, then, you know, we'll be able to keep our schools open, you know, which is wonderful. The quarantines, of course, as we know, and coverage for those in quarantine and/or who don't feel well has been the bane of our kind of existence this year. So once folks are vaccinated after their two-week period, 10 days to two weeks, depending on which they're getting, then there would not be a requirement to have to quarantine even if you were a close contact. So that's awesome.
I think the optimistic thing is that with the Johnson &amp; Johnson one coming in, I know that a lot of people in the older groups are getting this weekend, if they can get to Loudon on Sunday, like all the people that were supposed to be in April. So I think thankfully, we've sort of stepped up the timeline again, and it's exciting.
Yeah, very, very exciting. So that's all I know.
Great.
I'll share more at the next meeting after I have more news.
Yeah, I know. It's a moving thing. It just happened, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Susan. Then we have committee reports. They successfully installed the sound attenuators last week at the high school, and I say successfully because they substantially reduced the noise that they were experiencing from the rooftop units around the science room areas and the hallways. So that's a good thing. They're going to do a final walkthrough. Jean, I think that's scheduled for the 10th. Is that right? Okay, yeah. And then that should be the final, final walkthrough.
What date was it?
The 10th of March. Yep. And so that should be it. And what I would suggest is that we were talking about having that final, you know, building committee meeting. So we just schedule it for sometime after that because we'll have the final, final on everything. We'll have the clerk of the work sign off, the HVAC sign off, and we should do that. And I'd be happy to do it. I'd have to do it as emeritus, but would be happy to do that. We can figure out a date that might work for the board and the building committee.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. That's it for my committee. I did want to, actually, I had, just flipping through emails, there's a, for the policy committee, the New Hampshire School Board Association has a seminar later, and I forget the date. I don't want to get it wrong. It's in March, but it's like two weeks out, two or three weeks out. But it sounded interesting. I read the syllabus.
Thanks.
Check out that date. That's it. Any other committee reports? Good. Student report, Taylor.
So the girls' boys basketball team, so after the playoffs, we're really great starting. March 7th, girls' varsity, had a long game against the CCA, and they won in the quarter 29. The girls' varsity team played at the game tonight at 7:00 p.m. against Epping, where they're division four. Boys varsity, calling Jane Musterby, there's Epping High School, where they also won 46 to 44. On March 6th at 5:00 p.m., they will play in the division four of quarterfinals. I think the teams to be determined, so good luck to them. On Sunday, everyone from the, from the markets home team competed at States and said, oh, sadly, there aren't any realists this year, but Elizabeth Hattie and Mike Burns represented the Wolves at the B. Elizabeth had the 200 free and the 100 yard grab stroke, and Ken Burns also competed in the 200 yard free. Model United Nations had a mission of Ireland briefing this week where representatives from Ireland's permanent mission kind of got to talk to us because we are representing in the New York Model UN competition next week. So we got to ask them questions about like their policies and how they view themselves in the UN, and it was really cool. We've never done anything like that before. So Student Council will be holding a food drive in late March for the New Market Food Tournament. So there's not a definite date yet, but just look out for the date when you can bring in canned goods. One last thing. So lastly, because it's my dad's last school board meeting, I just wanted to thank him for the six years he has dedicated to the school board. He joined the school board to not only improve my brothers and I's educational experience, but other students as well. He might be too modest to say this, but he is one of the greatest contributors to the school building project, and for that, I, along with many others, are eternally grateful. He has inspired my dedication to public service, and I can only hope that I can complete half the public service he has in my lifetime. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now.
Moving on.
Alright. So where are we? So yeah, down to action items, we got minutes. I have a motion to approve minutes from February 8th, non-public.
Second.
Were there any edits or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And then we have manifests. Let me see here. I'll make a motion to approve the manifest in the amount of $660,268.99. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. And then Susan, we've got, next, we've got a few items. We may have presenters on in terms of the Chromebooks.
We do.
Jason's here, I know.
Yep, I'm going to have Jason come up in case you have any questions. But we sent out RFPs for Chromebooks, as well as, I think, our internet services. And Jason's providing you with the results of that here. So I'm going to let him share with you his recommendation.
Sure, so starting with the student Chromebooks, we paid a few weeks ago and looking for quantity 170 Chromebooks, as well as Chromebook licensing. This is a FYI, purchase, but the supply chains are, have been insane, especially with Chromebooks, laptops, you name it. So we're requesting approval to purchase this gear now, in hopes that we have it for September, ready to go for when our kiddos come back. Went out to bid and received 10 total bids. And pricing was pretty, looked the same throughout, pretty close, within five grand between each different vendor. What I was really looking at was availability. And what was available two weeks ago may not be next week. So what we're going to do is get our order in as soon as we can, as soon as we get approval. And the recommended vendor is HPI International, which we've bought Chromebooks off several times before, for a grand total of $45,500. And that is for, again, quantity 170 HP Chromebooks, as well as licensing. If we do get our PO in by next Monday, we're looking at saving $1,500 just for that Google Chrome license is going to increase by $9 a unit.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Savings, does that come off of that $43,758?
So we would be looking at a total of about, yeah, so on the second page, you're talking in the bid comparison?
Yeah, just the actual Chromebooks, not the licensing. You said you'd save $1,500. So I was just wondering, is that what the offer would be?
$5,588.
That'd be the grand total with the discounted rate.
With the discount?
Yep. If not, we're looking at about $45,500.
Oh, okay. And so the money to pay for this is in this year's budget. What we were able to do is to take much of our technology purchases, along with, you know, negative air pressure rooms and other things that were related to and associated with our COVID plan, and leverage grants for that. So the money that's in this year's budget, we haven't used yet because we were able to take advantage of grant money for that. So it's not a matter of we're overspending. I just wanted to be clear about that. And again, should other grant money come into play, you know, we can always try to, again, push that off. But there is money in the budget for this purchase.
Jason, thank you for putting those memos together. They're thorough and helpful. Any questions?
I had a question about the big comparisons on the Fiber Next and Omada.
Sure, do you want to do?
There's a big, you know, difference in those bids.
Yeah, so with that, certain vendors, especially technology vendors, will do deal registration. So first come, first served. If Omada comes to Aruba first and they register that deal, they get special pricing, which excludes, we'll still receive the pricing no matter which vendor gets that deal. But whoever gets there first gets the carrot, so to speak. So that's why you see that big difference. The other difference there is, it was Fiber Next. They bid a totally different product. They bid, Ruckus was the manufacturer they bid. We've been using Aruba for several years now. So both our wireless and wired networking equipment is already Aruba, so.
And then the internet service provider, Consolidated, is that, it's not as big of a company as Comcast, correct? Like it's, or is it?
It's pretty big.
I don't know, I just don't see it that often anymore.
I think Comcast has more residential deals with towns and cities, so that's why you probably see the name a lot more. But as far as, from a business standpoint, business solution, Consolidated is pretty big. And I think they were, they used to be Fairpoint.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then they were bought out by Consolidated.
Okay.
Just like First Light used to be Oxford Networks and then Bay Ring, so. They're changing hands often. In as far, yeah, sure, we'll jump into this one next. There were a few things I want to point out in the E-Rate vendor recommendation memos. And the first is, both of these items here, we have the network switching, the wireless access points, and then the internet service. We do a bid process, but it's through E-Rate, so we follow federal guidelines as opposed to, I guess, our normal board policy. It'd be a little different. And the big difference is that we post on the USAC website, which is who the FCC contracts to oversee the collection and distribution of E-Rate funds to schools and libraries. And we're required under E-Rate to post for 28 days. And it gets posted on that USAC site. It's visible to all sorts of vendors nationally. So there's plenty of exposure there.
Can you explain a little bit more what E-Rate is?
Sure, so E-Rate means, we get about 50% back. It, I believe it's based off free and reduced lunch, but for our district, we look at about a 50% reimbursement. And there's new pots of money that come out every few years. And that, that amount changes. But any networking equipment, anything that qualifies, networking equipment, internet access, those are the big ones. Phones used to be on there, but not since a few years. We'll receive that reimbursement on, as long as we reply for it. So we're planning ahead for next year. Usually in the fall, we'll do that. Post in the winter and then seek approval, usually in the spring, around March, for purchases for July 1.
Can I ask you about the Chromebook purchases? How often will be doing those? Like how often do we have to, you know, get new ones for the kiddos?
Four years has been our replacement cycle on student Chromebooks. And our one-to-one model has been, students get a new device in fifth grade, stays with them till they reach ninth grade, then they get a new one, and then they'll take it home with them when they graduate.
So every year, we have the same purchase? Because the kids are moving up a year, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so every year, we're making that same purchase.
I just, for the viewing audience, I wanted to make sure.
Depending on.
Every year we do this, yeah.
It's about anywhere from 150 to 200 devices every year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A couple of other things to point out with the fiber. We're going to be increasing our current circuit from 750 megs up to 1 gigabyte. So it'll be a nice improvement there. Our current cost there is $1,100 a month. And we'll reduce that, if we go with Consolidated, to $728 a month, which is about $13,400 savings over the three years.
Where in our network would you say we bought?
Um, I'd say we don't have any right now. We've had, out of the 750 meg circuit, we're about 50% utilization on average. There's spikes at certain times, obviously. But just that cost of fiber is coming down. So to go to a gig, it makes, which we'll grow into, we've acquired a lot of devices just in the past year, most of which have been at home with students. So I'm sure once we have everyone back in school with, you know, 1,500 devices on the network, we'll feel it. That's all I have. Again, this would be for the networking equipment. And the internet circuit, we're looking at July 1 purchases, and the Chromebooks would be as soon as we can.
Any further questions?
No.
Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the E-Rate bid purchase in the, can you read it? 500, no, the purchase of Chromebooks, e-glasses.
So moved.
Any further discussion, thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, and then there's an NCEP grant, Susan.
Yes, so Lori Carmichael, who is a speech pathologist at the elementary school, wrote a grant to our foundation and was awarded that grant for $500 for a piece of equipment that she would like to use in her classroom space. So we're grateful for our partnership with the Newmarket Community Education Partnership Foundation and are thrilled to be able to get this equipment for Lori.
Great. Thanks for, we say this almost once a month, NCEP, and I just make a small plug for them. You know, my company has a program to, where I can donate and they'll match it. Other companies, you know, lots of companies do that. So, you know, if you have that ability and maybe have them in mind, they're a great, great cause. They've given so much over the years. They sort of fill in the gaps of need, so we appreciate that. And we appreciate the board, board's work, too. It takes time to go out and raise money and conduct their organization, so we appreciate it. With that said, I'd seek a motion to approve that grant.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And we have a second policy review on those listed policies.
As of right now, neither Amy nor I have received any communication from any board members about any questions. Susan, I don't, you said you had not received any, so I think I would move that we approve the policies that we discussed last time.
I concur.
There's a second.
Second.
Amy, it was a second. I'm just saying, I'm repeating this because our minutes taker isn't here. She's going to listen to Channel 13 and do the minutes. But any further discussion from the board since last meeting? Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those policies are approved. Thank you, Policy Committee.
Thank you, Susan, for your thought out stuff and insight on them. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to the end. I don't have any other business. Does the board have any other business? Great. Okay, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.